It's Monday. What's the date? Does anybody know the date today? So, obviously, we went through all the items that were on the wish list last time we were here. And so, what we're here to do, I think we had some really good discussions about what kind of what we were going to fund or what we were thinking might be troublesome. We wanted to kind of go over a few of the items that we didn't quite have the answers to, and so we could kind of have a little more discussion. Joy's not here tonight, but I think we've figured out, for everybody that's here tonight, we had, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but we had discussed that travel for council for some folks was not an option because we may, I'm just going to be quite honest, you aren't making $22,000 doing this job, and for you to go to some conference in New York, or Chicago, or San Francisco, or something, is quite expensive. And if you only get $2,000, that doesn't cover your expenses to go to a conference, even one conference a year. And so, we were looking at putting a little more money in just the council's budget for travel. So, at least, at least you're covered if you go to a conference for three days, your room, and your food, and your travel. And for Councilmember Allen, did you need something?
Sure.
Ask a question with regard to that. Have we routinely used up that entire budget every year?
Well, see, that's another, that's another of the, one of the issues. We didn't use it all up this year because most people don't, they don't use the travel because they, it doesn't pay, you know, so you're kind of like, Councilmember.
Well, I was just going to add, whether we use it or not, it's busted. Like, I very specifically never use the dollars because there's people in the council that need it more than I do. So, I, for years, I haven't even thought about using it.
Yeah, and it's, it's just, it should, if you take a trip and you're trying to, like, go into a state conference or something for something about state or local government, you should be paid. I don't think that's something, you shouldn't have to come out of your own pocket, especially when you're only making $22,000 a year to do this job. So, that's just our thought. So, we were going to put a certain amount in there, and then I had a little conversation with the vice mayor about, Councilmember Stiles had brought up the sister cities, and that was an issue that we, everybody, a lot of folks had put it on the wish list. And so, we ended up with a round number to add about, took a little bit out of that, with the travel, we were going to add to that travel, so we could fund the sister cities out of a little bit of that travel, and add about another $50,000 on to it. It's about $80,000, is that right, 82?
It's going to be 82.
So, the travel budget would be about $120,000, and then the other part of that would be added on to their sister cities budget. So, they'd get the extra 25. So, that's kind of how we fell out on that. So, that was where we were on that issue. I think I've discussed this with all of you before. If not, I apologize. We've, this was just one item that we had discussed a long time ago, in that the mayor's office has four or five lobbyists running around at the state legislature that represent the mayor at the state legislature. I don't think it's their fault. I mean, I actually contracted one to help him with other clients, but they answer to the mayor's office. And so, I made sure, some, there were some funding put in the mayor's budget for additional lobbyist, having some of that transferred at least, so we could have one up there representing the council. Several other cities in the state have their, like, their councils have people for them actually representing them, and they come back and report to the council. So, you're actually seeing what is going on directly to you. They contract to you, and they answer to you. So, it's, there's $100,000, I think, in the budget, or something like that. So, we could actually have someone up there who can get some, Councilmember, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. So, I think that that's a great idea. One of the ideas that, as I'm out and about in that community right now, everybody's asking about that around the city. So, you know, I think the thought that I had was a potential standing committee for state and local government in the upcoming term.
Yeah.
And I think this would be a fantastic, maybe, instead of that, or at a minimum, complimentary to it.
And so, the way the, the way, not the city of Memphis, but the Shelby County Commission does it, is they have their own legislative committee, and then someone who's, who represents that legislative committee works with the lobbyists personally, and with their, with their person who's in charge, you know, they appoint them, but the vice mayor would work, and so, that's how that would work. So, and you, Councilmember, you're recognized.
So, my only thought is that I know that this last time, there was a comment from people from the state that sometimes we have people there walking in opposite directions that are not speaking in tandem for the city. So, how do we make sure, I like the idea of a council person, but we do need to make sure that the council person and the mayor person are not working against each other.
And the Shelby County Commission, just so y'all know how they do it, they, they bring up items, obviously, things that have, have to be passed, but it has to be a law or an ordinance on the books. And then, the council, Shelby County Commission, what they do is, they vote on items that you want to see pushed or defended at the legislature. You're using your money, so you want it, which ones do y'all want? You vote on it, whatever the, which y'all could all agree on, that's what the person would represent for you, you know, so you'd have a list of items, and then that committee would keep y'all updated on what's going on, and, you know. Obviously, with the way things are up there, it's not always going to be positive, but at least you know what's going on, and you get someone to have meetings with. The thing that really struck me about the Shelby County Commission is, they actually have meetings with the governor, they have meetings with the finance chair, they have meetings with both the leaders. So, they're continuing, I mean, they're actually having meetings, and they're talking. So, and I noticed that Memphis has been doing a lot better up there than we've been doing lately. I don't want to say it's completely because of lobbyists, but I don't think meeting with the governor and letting them know your thoughts is a bad thing ever. So, but, I just want to let y'all know, so that's what those two items in the budget are. So, when you see them, you'll know what they're, it's corporate, I think, contribution, I forget what that is. He got tran, contractual services, you know, he got transferred over from the mayor's office. So, what was the, I'm going to start going through the items that we had that were an issue. Get my glasses, that's what I can see. We'll start with the, we just want to make sure we were clear, a lot of y'all weren't here. The library parking, finance let me know that the library parking, even if we had the money for that, they don't have the spaces for us in the library that are, that we can actually use because it's under, you know, when are they starting, are they going to fix that?
Thank you, Chair.
Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Yes, the library parking garage, the fifth and sixth floors are under construction now. I'm not sure what the completion is on that, but they don't, they don't have enough space to accommodate the parking request.
So, I know everybody wanted us to provide the money for people to be able to park over there, but there's no spots for us to even contract to, to park over there. So, that's, that's that issue. The safer, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Mind if I add that, in the meantime, there is budgeted a shuttle directly for library staff, employees to use to park at the Nissan Stadium, I believe it is, and they have a direct shuttle from the stadium to the library. So, that service will still be available for library employees. And they park for free at the Nissan Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Councilmember, you're recognized.
Thank you. That was one of mine, and so, my question is, do we know when the renovation of the garage would be done? Is this something that we will be funding later in the years, or for now, it's just on the table?
And I'm not sure about the construction, construction schedules. Anybody here know anything about the construction schedule at the library? Well, I'm sure we could find that out by tomorrow to let you know. So, the safer bars, and somebody might have to help me with this because I'm not familiar with the program. I know that several people, it was the sexual abuse center, I know this was the safer bars issue, and I was hoping someone, we weren't quite sure on how that would be managed or administrated through the, and so, we were trying to find out how that, how that's done. The extra, I think it was, we were putting in, was it 75,000 or 70,000, we were, that had been requested for that, 75. And so, if anybody has any, I, it sounds like a good program, but I'd just like to know a little more information before, do they need the money? Is it something that has been working? And these are just the questions that I have, you know, I see it on a piece of paper, but no one's kind of given me any background on the, the program. I know Erin Evans had some information the other day, she said she'd give me more, but she's not here today, so.
Any suggestions for which department?
Yeah, and which department is it? Kelly, you might know, is it, what department is it run out of right now? You recognize?
I think currently, it's not a metro. It is something the downtown bars, or I don't know if it's the partnership facilitates. I think the expectation was expanding it outside of that footprint, so we were, that's what we were looking for a little guidance on, is if we were able to fund it, where should it live?
Okay. Maybe I can talk with Erin more. We have one more little, supposed to have a little meeting tomorrow, and so, maybe tomorrow during the day, I can get with Erin and see what her thoughts were, if this was a, I'm sure it was a women's caucus issue, but I don't know if she brought it. She seems to have a little more information, so it's probably her issue. So, I'll talk to her and see if it's something that we can get done. The Glen Cliff, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question before we move off of the safe bar program, which I believe is a very important program, and hopefully, we can find funding to support it. But my question is, would this qualify perhaps as a program that the Nashville Conventions and Visitors Bureau could possibly support under the nonprofit and, and programming that they support annually? We might look at that as well as a funding source.
Director Flannery, you have any thoughts on that?
I love spending other people's money, so. I think with the details, right, like, if it's outside of the, you know, the typical downtown footprint, is that allowable use? I think so, but I think we just need more information before we can make that determination.
All right. Thank you. One of the other issues, the TJC, I know Councilmember Allen had wanted to give a little money to the TJC. I think my issue was that, I think we're going to find out, I've asked them to give us some information. It's my understanding, there's a, if you go to the TenCare website, there's a phone number, and it says on there, under the phone number, if you call this number, a local agency will help you. And so, it's, I was talking to some folks, and they think that that local agency is the Department of Health. So, that we might actually already be receiving funding from TenCare to help people go through this process. So, that's why I was just, I was trying to find out for sure exactly what they were doing before we start looking at outside agencies, because if we're not doing our jobs as a, as a metro, then we need to start doing our job. Councilmembers, you're.
Go ahead.
Yes, so, my understanding is that this is because they'll be working specifically in the Sudokun Napier neighborhood, and they wanted to target the residents and the kids in their neighborhood, because even if you say, talk to an agency, some people might not have the ability of the phone or something, they're stationed, that the new office is going to be there, and they want to be able to help that community navigate, whether it's our system or the state, that's the purpose of what they're trying to do.
And then, that, that was, that came, gave me another question, was, do they work like this in other communities, and how does that work? And so, that's, I had that question the other day, and I never really got an answer to that question. So, we were, we were wanting to know, when I went and looked at the TJC's website, they had 40 employees on there. I noticed that every law firm in town, they had a list of thousands of donors. So, when I started looking, I'm like, so, they have millions and millions of dollars running through this program, so I'm thinking, do they really need our 60,000, or do they just come and ask us for 60,000? And you understand what I'm saying, so.
So, and I will say, they were specifically saying, because we are embedded in this neighborhood, and because we know this is an immediate need that's going to happen this year as the TenCare rules are purged, or cleaned, or whatever, and there are people who totally qualify to continue on the rules, but do not have the legal expertise to navigate the system, we will, we will save Metro money through both our health department and our emergency rooms at Nashville General, if we can keep them on this. And so, it seems like a benefit to both the health department, Nashville General, and the MDHA to do that. So, and all those departments, I contacted all those departments, and they were all supportive, nobody quite knew where it should live, and I understand the need to figure that piece out, but if we could keep that conversation going.
No, 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 and that's, and that's, I think, you know, we're going to meet tomorrow, and then.
Great.
Yes, because you're correct. When I worked at TenCare every year, when, when the time came for the roles, the thing is, if people, they get stuff in the mail all the time from the, from the state, and it looks like just, you know, and you, and you just throw it in the trash or something, you're not paying attention to what it is, it's telling you that your TenCare is about to come to an end. And people don't realize that, and, and that's a big deal, if you're, especially.
Right, so having a local presence with legal expertise, and this would, this would fund a part-time position specifically to do that. So, if we can just keep that conversation, and I'm happily to stay engaged in that.
I completely understand.
Thank you.
The one thing we wanted to have a little conversation about, and I appreciate y'all on the TJC trying to give me feedback on that, the Glen Cliff issue could, who all brought the, do y'all know, who all on the, I know it was like quite a few, it might have just been you, but I didn't know who all else might have brought this issue. We've had discussions about this, and we had, we were talking about the grants and the different programs that we fund, and maybe, Kelly, you could kind of chime in here on what we were discussing, on how this is funded, and how other programs are funded, and how that might work. And so, if you just, I'd appreciate anything you could add to this.
Sure, and any additional detail about what the proposed scope of services would be appreciated. It was a little bit frenetic and unclear, but I think, from what I heard last time, maybe the most appropriate use, and I'm pointing at you because you were Councilman Johnson last time I sat here, brought up the opportunity, there's additional funds to Living and ARPA, and it has funded similar programs, and maybe this is a better space for what that is. But if, if anyone has a greater scope to confirm that, that would be helpful.
Well, I like the work that they do. They just want the money, so, but we can get some information.
So, just to be clear, if it went through ARPA, it would have to go through the normal ARPA process, and that would be post-passage of this budget?
I think most of the other, we had a few other issues. I don't know if, we're going to have to do a little bit of a transfer here, and I want to make sure, Brett's here, and legal counsel, and Kristen's here, on the naval base, what's going on with that? Kristen, are you, would you like to come up here and explain this? Because I, I'll just mess it all up, and I don't want everybody to think I'm smart or anything like that, so.
Well, I guess I'll get started. I think a lot of people are very familiar with this building, which Metro has owned for a long, long time. I had submitted a capital improvements budget request, went through the council prioritization process, where also went, was ranked very high, and Mayor Cooper was kind enough to include a request for funding for the Naval Reserve Building. Again, it is a metro-owned building, it'd be leased to Friends of Shelby Park, and this is a little bit of like, the kind of public-private partnerships that I've been trying to foster a little bit in East Nashville, because we do have a lot of resources in our community. So, Friends of Shelby Park had worked with the Center for Nonprofit Management, and come up with a, kind of a budget for leasing the building, or, excuse me, for renovating the building, leasing it out to some different organizations, but, but there also is the need just to get the building itself stabilized, because it's in such a bad condition. And so, I'd request, had requested 2.5 million for Metro funding. The total budget of the project at that time was about 6.5. It's now, of course, escalated since then. But, but, so this was to provide some Metro match for that additional private fundraising that would be raised, as well as for the ongoing leases that would provide ongoing maintenance for the facility in the future. The Parks Board approved that as a means of kind of getting it off of their books a little bit. So, we have since run into a little bit of a legal snafu about that, which I will maybe defer to Kristen on, but we do have a solution that we think works well for, for everyone.
Margaret can probably speak quite well to this as well, but the 2.5 million was going to come from geo-bonds, from the authorization. And with geo-bonds, we have some challenges with entering into any type of long-term lease with a private partner. And in particular, as they're going through fundraising right now, the Friends of Shelby are running into some challenges because they don't have a longer-term commitment from Metro that could be represented by a lease. So, one of the things we were trying to think through is, is there a way, instead of us using geo-bond funding, for us to use the excess surplus funding that is proposed? Because then it would be cash-funded, would not come from a geo-bond, would not have the same level of restrictions to it, so then we could go back to the Friends of Shelby as our partners. At the same time, we had one other thing we've been wrestling with, with the excess funding, which is, as Kelly has made very clear, it would not become available until after the ACFIR is, is relayed, and so, had requested, we think about it as kind of available as a 1-1. There is some fleet funding that's in here, proposed for FIRE and EMS, that it would be great for us to be able to start the order cycle on that sooner. So, one of the things, we sort of put those two problems together, and, and want to present to you, and again, this will be at your review and your will, but the idea would be to reduce the fleet line item in the excess fund by 2.5, and add a new item for the Naval Reserve. And then, we would draft this legislation as soon as possible. You all could have it filed or in your hands by the time you vote on the 20th, but there would be a CSP change brought before you, it would be a capital spending plan. It would, can't be considered the same time as a budget by your council rules, but it would de-authorize the Naval Reserve authorization of 2.5, and then it would authorize a 2.5 in heavy fleet spending. So, that, we're just, we're, we're trying to align the funding sources a little bit better with the needs. It's tricky, and it's messy, and so, wanted to put that out there, and as a, as a, as a request for you all to consider.
And y'all have discussed this with Chief, and he was okay with that, is that correct?
I think he not only is okay with it, I think he sees it as a positive to be able to get his orders in earlier in the cycle, but, but for sure, I want to make sure that everyone has a chance to validate with them, that with them too.
So, that was, that's what was, the issue was, and so, I want to bring this to everybody, because this just happened within the, yesterday or today. So, Councilmember Elizabeth, you're recognized. Emily, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'll go by Elizabeth, as long as you're letting me talk. So, the 2.5 is going to come, would come from the surplus then, is that, okay, that's just one of the clarifications.
Yeah, so.
It's a great project.
It'd be a swap out, yeah.
I know East Nashville needs this project. It's a, it's a very good project.
Well, and again, I mean, one of the, the real challenge that we're having with the building, I mean, which you can see every time you pass by it, is just the need to secure the building. There's some degree of demolition interior that's going to need to happen, but we, we have folks who are entering and living in that building in conditions that are very, very dangerous to themselves, frankly. And so, the sooner we can get that building secured, the better. And with some of the other legal loopholes that we're having to, hoops that we're having to jump through, it's just extending that timeline for making those public dollars available for Friends of Shelby to secure the building.
And I would just add, if, if people are not familiar with Friends of Shelby, they're a longstanding organization with a lot of power behind them, that if, if this money is, you know, once this commitment is there, I don't have any doubt that they'll be able to do their part on the private side of this relationship. They're a very strong organization and well-standing in East Nashville, as well as throughout the entire city and region.
Well, thank you. And one thing I'll add to that as well, obviously, we're still trying to figure out what this pathway is, but the project, even from its inception, has worked with architects, at least to get things started. They are bidding out some architect services, but there are a lot of professional skillsets that are represented in that plan that was presented to the Parks Board, which they approved. And so, one of the things that we would ultimately receive before this funding is released is sort of benchmarks about so much funding can be allocated based on, for certain projects at certain times throughout it, so that we're not just giving them a blank check for 2.5, but rather, it's more targeted to specific needs of securing and rehabilitating the actual structure in particular.
Councilmember, you're recognized.
I have no objection to the building, but I think there was a like-minded conversation for another building, that I'm sure probably was discussed the last time I was not here, but I wanted to make sure that I bring it back, and that is the Morris Building. And the, and the renovation and the restoration of that follows the same thing. In fact, in the minority caucus meeting, that was one of my suggestions, that the fleet is something that comes from the 4%, that we can actually put back in the 4% and have an opportunity to rehabilitate. The idea is that if we should, the 8 million that is proposed is for the purchase. There is private conversation, and there's going to be a fundraiser, there are a lot of people in the city that wants to make that a civil rights museum. Not only that, we have a lot of metro offices that are renting buildings right now, that are proposed to stay in that building, so instead of paying rent somewhere, we have our own building. So, I'm just saying that the same crafty deal was also discussed for the Morris Building in terms of the funding of it, and use, it's a one-time, it's in the surplus as well. We can move fleets to 4%. We've done that before. So, I'm looking at Chrissy right now to be able to say that I want to replicate, duplicate, whatever the word is, to be able to at least have a good conversation about that one as well.
Director Flannery, you're recognized.
Sure, just for clarification, the fleet that we're contemplating in surplus is heavy equipment fleet, and that's typically bond-funded, it's not 4%.
Okay. So, but we can use a part of that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chair.
No, that's, you're recognized.
So, I, I'm saying that I think that that fleet was about 5 million, and so, there's still 2.5 of that still left. And I also know that in part of, when I was doing my wish list, part of the source of funding that I also indicated for that Morris Building is the fact that, Ms. Chrissy, that we have a 4.6% in the budget that we're transferring to the 4%, and I think that the, the requirement is 4%. So, if we do 4%, that's to give us some money to be able to add to it. I'm putting it down that I've identified some of that, and I'm hoping that we can craft something. We're talking about saving buildings, we're talking about historical building, we're talking about building that a lot of people are interested in saving, and this is one of them as well, and I hope that we'll give it as much of a serious consideration as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Rindes, you're recognized.
I totally agree about the importance of the Morris Building, but I think, and I don't know whether it's finance, or Margaret can, can tell us, I don't think the exact same mechanism is possible, because the, the building in Shelby Park is already in the CIB, and so, this is just basically switching around a couple funding sources, netting.
It's already in the CSP. It's already been funded, so, it's already been funded.
Whereas the, the Morris Building, as I understand, would need construction, which would require being in the CIB before we could actually.
The, the Morris Building project is in the CIB, not the CSP. The naval building has already been funded in the most recent CSP, so the, the money is ready to go for the naval building.
Does anybody know how much the Morris Building is in the CIB for?
I believe it's 28 million. Am I, is that right?
It was 24 million.
20? Yeah, that's, I, I thought it was 28 million. Okay.
It was 27 million.
Yes.
All right.
And that includes purchase and rehabilitation, because apparently, there's a lot of rehabilitation that needs to be done to the building.
So, thank you for that, I appreciate it, because that was one of the items on the list, so we just had that nice discussion, and I didn't have to call it out. I think I've had this discussion in this room or upstairs with most of y'all. So, we've so far pulled money, looked at everything. I think we're going to be able to fund most things that were on the wish list. If they weren't, if they're not being funded, is, we, we've had good discussions about it, and there's a reason why we can't fund them right now. It doesn't mean that they might not get funded later in the year or next year, it's just that we can't do it right now. We are going to be able to do a 2% COLA, we know that, and so, that's, that's a big deal. So, that's, you know, that's $15 million right there, and so, that's a lot of money. So, there's a lot of other things that are being funded that I didn't think we'd be able to fund. The substitute teachers, I know a lot of people have brought up the substitute teachers, but I, I think we've all had this kind of discussion. They have surplus money in their budget that they can give raises to substitute teachers, and I've asked Margaret, and I've asked Director Flannery, and they're going to put some language in the budget. I'm, I'm not going to put money in the budget for that, because they have money. And so, I'm going to recommend that they look at the substitute teacher pay. Obviously, they're bringing a lot of things in-house, and they're going to raise the pay for those, and they're going to have healthcare. There's going to be others. I think most of y'all who showed up for some of the hearings saw the MEA folks step up, and they were warning, we understand that there are going to be substitutes that are not full-time, there are going to be some part-time, and we're hoping that they will increase their pay to an amount that is, bring people in, and they feel like they're being paid. What we don't want to do is cause compression for the lower-paid teachers, which that, you know, that can be an issue. If someone who's coming in substituting is making more than you, that would be, obviously, that'd be an issue. Councilmember.
I'll just make a clarifying, probably quick, I'm sorry. Director Flannery, you're recognized. You did a great job. So, the, the recommendation would be in the surplus, MNPS surplus, to reduce what is currently allocated for reserves for one-time substitute bonuses, and that will require an amendment that Councilmember Rindes suggested before, to the fund balance policy for, to extend beyond just capital purposes. But it would not be a recurring substitute increase. But it would not be a recurring substitute increase.
Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate the comments that you gave. And just wanted to add to that, that considering that MNPS does have, they are getting what they requested from the mayor's, and the mayor's proposed budget, they are getting what they requested, and they do, they do have surplus to address any increase for substitute pay. We just want to make, make it publicly known that we support our teachers, we support the need to address inflation and the need for increase in pay. But it needs to be done at the school board and superintendent level, not necessarily at this council level. Our, our, our job is to recommend and support the budget recommended by, by the school board. And then the school board can make the determination of what is needed in addressing those staff needs. So just wanted to add that comment, thank you.
Councilmember Bendez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair, I completely concur with what the Vice Chair just described. I wanted to just say, I would request, and maybe I'm documenting it here by saying this here, that the school board look at the way the MNEA had it written. I believe it was a $4 per hour increase for the three levels of pay for the subs. But I would ask that the school board look at that recommendation from MNEA. I think I captured it correctly just now, but if not, to take a look at that. And if they could fulfill that wish in their policy, obviously, we have no say to make them do that, but now I've said it.
Councilmember Swor, you're recognized.
Thank you, now repeating what everybody said, I'm strongly favor of us making that strong recommendation. And I've said same to the MNPS Budget Chair, as well as Passage Doctor Battle. What I wanted to also ask though is that it's another item that we have here on our budget that relates to MNPS, and I don't know if there was any conversation, if we're going to make some suggestion, we cannot make them. I wanted to see if this could be added to it, or if it was even discussed at all. So part of the two things that I have for MNPS was the substitute, the other one was the family liaison. And this came from me, the Minority Caucus, and the Women Caucus. This is a situation where we have a lot of non-English-speaking families that are now being engaged by the school, because we don't have people that speak those languages engaging with the family. So this was a conversation with the MNPS Budget Chair, it's a need for it. I put 1 million requests in the wish list, but I would like, if it's okay with this body, to add that to something that we would strongly consider them to, please think about funding as well as we're talking about the substitute, if is the wish of this body. But I do think they need those family liaison very, very well, and if we can add it to the suggestion, I would appreciate it.
I was just told, I knew, we discussed this, not the last one, but I think it was the time before, we discussed this, and she said we ended up with, from the surplus, doing a one-time pilot program to make sure that we got that taken care of. And so I'm hoping, I'll talk with her to make sure that we have the right amount of funding in there, but we did discuss that, and so that was something that we put in, that that needed to be done, so. It would come, it would come from their surplus. And it's a recommendation for them to do that, so, yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, I mean, we, everything on the list, we've discussed, I mean, at length. I don't want anybody to think that we did not take up anything we have, and so I'll probably see it all when I see the substitute and be like, oh, yeah, that's right, we discussed that, that's right. So there is, there's a recommendation that I think Minority Caucus made, and I think it was a few other folks made on top of the 2%, and that's a half percent bonus. I did ask Director Flannery to go through the exercise of if we did give a small bonus, you know, at least make it $500 so that, you know, you actually can see it in your paycheck. The issue was the taxes, I know I discussed this with Councilmember Mendez, that there's 22% tax rate. And so we wanted to make sure, no matter what people made, that after the taxes came out, you were getting $500. You weren't seeing taxes take, you know, the whole thing. Right now, there's just an issue of us looking at where to get the funding from, because it's, is it eight? It's over $8 million, and I'll let Director Flannery kinda tell us where we are as far as that amount of money. And so we're really gonna have to, if we're gonna do that, it's gonna, we're gonna be taking from a fund or taking from our capital, or it's gonna have to come from somewhere, and it's gonna, you know. So, Director Flannery, you're recognized.
Sure, so assuming all positions, 9,900, which we know aren't all filled, but just start building a gap. To get to a $500 net bonus is about $852 after the gross, the employer taxes, the pension portion, the tax rate of 22% for bonuses. So if you assume every position is filled, you're 8.4 on the, on the long side. About 8,500 are filled at a time, water could probably absorb, that's about another 1,000. So I think if you're trying to come up with what are we solving for, it's probably a seven to eight and a half million dollar number for every employee, filled position employee to receive a $500 net bonus on one one.
Thank you, Director Flannery. And so with the 2%, I just wanna make sure y'all, when I started at this, that was my main goal. I think anybody who's been sitting around this table will understand, I've said from day one, my main goal was trying to get at least a 2%, and to make sure that we were above the inflation rate, because I can't tell you how many times I've worked for the state in how many years, and you look for a raise, and it's always well below the inflation rate. You're like, well, we're not making any money here, we're just losing money. And so I wanted to make sure that our employees were taken care of, and then when we got the raises, that the 6% COLA that they're getting with any merit raise is gonna be above the inflation rate. So that's, that was my goal, and so that's what I've done. Whether or not we can do this extra seven or eight, you know, I don't know if that's feasible, or if that's, you know, appropriate. I'm always game to listen to anybody on, when it comes to helping out employees, because I know how much those small bonuses I used to get at the state when I wasn't making very much money helped come Christmas time or right after Christmas, and you're trying to pay for all those presents that you bought your kids. So with that being said, I think we can talk, and I know some folks might be thinking of trying to put that into the, to the substitute to try to, and I'm not closing the door on that, I just think that we need to be really careful on what we do as far as taking that, you know, seven or eight million dollars. I've been talking with some departments, and we were talking about FTEs. A lot of departments are saying that they're getting a lot of requests for employment now, and so we don't wanna start rescinding offers that are being made. So we need to make sure we're talking to departments if someone wants to start taking FTEs. I don't think it's appropriate just to take FTEs without talking to the department heads and making sure they don't have offers out, things like that. So that's kinda where we are on that, I just wanted to put this all out there, so everybody knows what's coming down the pike. Is there anything else that we didn't really have? I'm trying to think. Vice Chair, you might have something. I'm sure there's a few things, if we leave here today, I'll be like, oh, I should've said that, but I can't think of anything.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, to your point about FTEs and not wanting to take away positions that would increase the level of service, which we all want and need for our city government, is to increase the level of service to accommodate the increase and growth in our city. But my question is, and I don't know, maybe this is for you, Director Flannery, is there an opportunity to take that 8 million, or whatever it is for that bonus, out of the surplus if we make the, out of the one-time expenditure surplus? If we make it after the first of the year, or?
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, is to do it that way. But that would require.
Taking something out of the surplus.
It's a real selfish choice, guys.
And that's, so there's several items in that, y'all, I'm sure your worth is 52 million, there's some, what are we? We have the Fire Department has some issues in there, NDOT has 20, how much is the total? So Vision Zero, a lot of the Vision Zero stuff that is in there, that's, this is what we're starting to talk about. So we're starting to talk about all the traffic calming, we're talking about that, and we're talking about.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, and there was.
Priority sidewalk.
The major thoroughfares that NDOT has.
Barns fund.
Barns fund.
BRT.
Yeah, so there's, I don't have that list in front of me, but some of y'all do, as I can see, so y'all are going through. So that's what we're gonna be, you know, you'd have to start taking from that, and so, don't get me wrong, I'm, I only have one traffic calming thing in that surplus, so if you give it to employees, it's not gonna hurt me. But a lot of folks who are on the council, there are a lot of projects in there that they've needed for a long time that's in the list, and so when you start taking, you're, you know, you might be taking from an intersection that's had four deaths in the past year, and you're not gonna improve it now. I mean, these are the kind of things that you're starting to look at if you get into that list. So be cautious when you start taking some of those items, so. Councilmember Swor, you're recognized.
Oh, sorry, I don't know if it was on the lease or not, or if it's what to be discussed. Did we look at NECAT for 114.3? No question, we're good?
We did look at it, and I think that the outcome was that there's an ongoing planning process for a new location for NECAT, and maybe Ms. Wilson can speak to that a little bit better.
You're recognized.
Thank you. The current lease with Nashville State Community College is coming to a close, and we just went through a strategic process to move NECAT to the library itself. And so they're working through options right now on a new location for when that lease ends. The, the thought was is to develop further with the library partners a vision for NECAT itself. Do you all know what NECAT does?
It's a community.
It is, it is a public access television. This is my second city to save NECAT in. And so MNN is actually a channel that comes through that agreement. So we are on a NECAT channel currently today, and then there's two that are made possible for education and community access. So there's digital capabilities within the library that justify the move over to the library. There's some studios already in the library, and as they're working through the analysis on a vision and then how they're gonna operate it, and hopefully cross-leverage some of the library capabilities already on digital content creation, there's also a question about location. And so there's just a lot of pieces that are moving right now, and the thought process was to let them get some of those pieces in place before we do too much staffing up further on the operation itself. There were no cuts that were made in the move to the library, so we have kept them at their full staffing in that transition.
So, so the, the, the number here came from the library budget details. So from your understanding, this is additional staff for them to be able to take it over?
This was a proposed increase in the staffing from what has been transferred over to the library today.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I think you've had discussions about this, and it would, it would, I think, be helpful to me to outline just a little bit of the discussion that went on with regard to the Highland Rim preservation. We had an awful lot of people that wrote and stood and talked about that, and I think that momentum is great, and I think we can move things forward with that. So if you can just briefly address, we're not seeing those issues showing up here, but I think that both the planning and the long-range acquisition of land are part of a larger thing that's still happening. So can you talk to that?
And I don't know if Kristen or Kelly wanna speak directly to the details of it. It's my understanding that the Highland Rim issue is being taken up by the Planning Department, and that there's planning right now for that issue. And Director Flannery, if you'd like to go into more detail on how the Planning Department's looking at that.
Much more than that. I don't know where they are in the process, but I understand that there is an existing planning budget line item that could be used for this, I'm not sure if they've actually started, but I can confirm that.
Okay.
And I had a little bit of a conversation with Lucy just about some slope protection study that they're looking at that this dovetails with, so I think that's a niche where it can be.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Allen. The one other item, I think, I had a lot of council members, and it's on the list several times, and a lot of folks who ride the bus a lot came to me and said they'd really like the Better Bus program funded. And we were looking at ways that we could do that. We ended up with the full 2.8 million, and we're taking it from the MTA surplus that's used for capital expenses in our extra money, there's a lot of money there for the MTA, for their, it's the 15 million for Murphy's Barrel Road, I believe. And so we came up with an idea that the 2.8 for the Better Bus program, we could use, because Better Bus program, part of it is actually purchasing buses, is my understanding. And so we could use that portion for that, out of the 15 million for the Murphy's Barrel Road planning. So I know they might not be happy, they're looking at me, but I don't know if they are or not. But the council members, quite a few actually, four or five asked me about the Better Bus. And so I know that was one of the items that was on our wish list, and then I had two at the last council meeting come directly to me, and so hopefully, we can work with Mr. Bland, folks at MTA, to see how we can help move this process along. Councilmember Mendez, you're recognized.
Thanks for what you just described. Does that, is any change to the budget required to execute that? Is it like a note to say that 2.8 of the 15 is being spent somehow?
Director Flannery, you say we're gonna put it on the budget, yeah?
Sure, so it's in the surplus allocation, and we changed it to say something, I don't really remember what, but the word Better Bus definitely now appears.
All right, so, gotcha, that's what I want.
It will show up on the substitute, so, I'm trying to think, oh.
Separate issue. Separate, separate topic.
Oh, yeah, it's all right. Councilmember Tims, you're recognized.
The MAC positions came up several times, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we are, someone who has a list in front of him, Margaret, would you like to go through what we, what we did on that?
Certainly, when you say MAC, do you mean Metro Action Commission or Animal Control? Take them, okay, Animal Control. Yeah, it looks like there's going to be able to have some fun, we'll be able to have some funding for a veterinarian and a veterinarian tech. Two positions.
Yeah, we couldn't get all of it, but we got, we got a vet and a vet tech, I think, was one of the main things, because I think that's one of the things that they were lacking over there, they could've used some extra help. And obviously, a vet and a vet tech's gonna be a big help over there, so that was one of our issues. Does anybody have any questions? I mean, we kinda went through all this, we, Councilmember Bendez, you're recognized.
I didn't hear us talk today about arts.
They both reminded me, they said, Kevin, before we start, remind 2% and the arts. So the $2 million we're funding arts, so it's gonna be 2 million is what we're gonna give to arts.
That's from within the budget, Robin Peter, take, Paul?
No, that was money that was in the surplus, and so it's gonna go, it's going directly into arts.
Chipping away at that surplus.
Well, no, no, this, this item was on there, what was it? It was called cultural grants. Investment, so this is changing over to the Arts Commission, so they're actually getting the money.
Thank you.
So this was already there for cultural and that type of thing, so.
Thank you.
All right, any other question, oh, Councilmember. No, not Kevin. Director Flannery, you're recognized.
I, I hope everyone feels like we, we chopped a lot of wood, and so there's not a lot of juice left in the berry. We're taking 4% down to about 4.5%. We've rated judgments and losses. There's not a lot left, I just wanna manage expectations for whatever the next week looks like.
Councilmember Mendez, you are recognized.
I'm glad we've chopped wood to the point that there's no juice left in the berry. Just on the arts thing, with it coming from the surplus funds, so it's gonna be for capital projects, or? Because it can't be operating, obviously.
Well, we're gonna amend it to say any one-time use, so I think there could be creation of a new program that contemplated grants or something to that effect. There's a lot of flexibility in that, it just couldn't be recurring programming or personnel.
All right, that's great for this year, for all the not-me people who are gonna be here. Like, that still doesn't get the jobs done for the arts in the long term, but I appreciate it for this year.
Chair, just want.
Councilmember Tims, no, it's okay, I didn't know if you were still wanting to speak, I didn't know.
Just wanted a reminder on when your substitute will be available, so that we can see your funding sources.
Yeah, so I'm, hopefully tomorrow, say, we have another, I think, budget meeting like this tomorrow afternoon, but there's, I mean, we've pretty much done it all tonight, there won't be much said tomorrow before the council meeting, but then I'm just gonna go hear Margaret, and so by Wednesday at 12 o'clock, it's supposed to be out there for everybody to see, so. So, I mean, y'all pretty much know, y'all, y'all heard, this is what else is gonna be in there, I'm not telling you anything, y'all, nothing surprising is gonna be in there, so.
And not to say if there will be any, but maybe there will be amendments deadline?
So the amendments deadline will be Thursday at noon.
Okay.
And, you know, Monday is a holiday.
Right.
And so we are going to be getting the amendments out by the end of day on Friday.
Okay.
And so this is an amendments, yeah, I mean, we're, it's good, good work for our office too. So we are gonna get all the amendments out by Friday, so this is the amendments deadline for all legislation. And you should have received an email to this point, on this matter already. But we'll be sharing the substitute budget on Wednesday, and we'll send it out via email to all the council members, and we'll post it on our SharePoint as well. But it won't be filed until later.
I have a motion to adjourn. Unless there's anyone, I see no, oh, I've got a hand in the back of the room, but she is not a member. in the back of the room, but she is not a member of this committee. So I don't know if she really gets to object or not. But I'll, since she's a nice person and I like her, I'll let her object for just a second. Councilmember Porterfield, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. No objection. I just wanted to make sure that you all had the information on the villages at Glencliff. Did y'all need any additional information on that?
No, we discussed, Councilmember, I mean, Director Flannery asked twice now.
Promotion or demotion you're trying to give me? But I don't want it either way.
Believe me, it's a demotion. No.
We contemplated it might be a more appropriate use in ARPA funding. There's still some money left there. But if there's additional scope that you want us to contemplate, we could look into it.
The money is just important that we get it. I don't care how we get it.
I'm sorry, MJ's still recuperating. I want to say she told me there was about $3 million left in ARPA funds to be appropriated, and I think that mirrors the purposes that have been utilized so far. So I don't want to say 100% yes, but it feels appropriate.
As long as we get it funded. But I just wanted to make sure everyone understood what the program was for, the medical respite, how the money would be used. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Benedict, we had a motion on the floor to adjourn. Bob's looking very eager.
This is, this is related to that motion. I think with that promotion to a council member, it frees up quite a bit of cash for us to be able to put in the budget somewhere. And with that, I renewed your motion.
For the charter, I think I only make $12,000 a year, is what it, it actually quantifies it.
We're adjourned.
Be so sure.
Thank you, Chair.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.